All right, let's start out tonight with Matthew. I think you have somebody you need to introduce to everybody.
Uh, she's...
My timing is good. We'll let you do it a little bit later on. Except when she comes back, we will let her know what happened, right?
Well, yeah.
Okay, I'll start out with item one, the Allegheny County Opportunities Scholarship. We have representation from Frostburg University to talk about the scholarship program that the county started a few years ago. I'd like to introduce Dr. Thomas Bowling. And I'll let you introduce those that are with you.
I'm joined by three of our students who have received the opportunity grants and also joined by my colleague, Dr. John Bowman, interim vice president for international and government affairs; John Short, vice president for university advancement; and Liz Metcalf, director of news and media services. And we'll let the students introduce themselves in just a moment. In preparing for this evening, and first of all, thank you for this opportunity to express our appreciation on behalf of the university and the students who have been the recipients of these scholarships to the county and the county commissioners. You are making a difference in students' lives, as I think you will soon hear directly from the students. In looking at the original memorandum of understanding, it is one of those remarkable projects in which the intent of this endeavor has been realized. The MOU indicates that these scholarships will increase educational opportunities, enhance economic development, and support the well-being of Allegheny County and its citizens. And I can assure you from my conversations with the students who have been the fortunate recipients of these scholarships that certainly well-being has been enhanced, educational opportunities have been enhanced, and I look forward to the impact that these individuals will have on economic development. But just the ability to attract and retain high-quality students at Frostburg is contributing to the economic impact of and an economic vitality of the county. Just a quick reminder in terms of the economic impact that the university has on Allegheny County alone. A study a few years ago indicated that the economic impact is estimated at over $121 million a year. And so, I would argue that a vibrant and growing university is one of the most important economic engines that exist in this county. And we're fortunate to have not only a four-year university but a thriving and vibrant community colleges as well. Just to recap very, very briefly where we stand right now, we have received just under $400,000 as a result of this program, or I should say more accurately, our students have received just under $400,000 as a result of the county commissioners' foresight in terms of a wonderful use of Rocky Gap revenue. And this year alone, this academic year, we have 183 students who are benefiting from this program. I don't want to take too much more time because I think the more compelling stories will be from the students themselves. So I will, would like to first introduce Nick DeMichael, a student originally from Mountain Ridge High School. And Nick is a double major in political science and English.
Thank you, Dr. Bowling. As Dr. Bowling mentioned, my name is Nick DeMichael. I am a resident of Westernport, Maryland, former and currently. I graduated from Mountain Ridge High School in 2013. Fun fact, I actually participated in dual enrollment programs at Mountain Ridge High School with both Allegheny College of Maryland and Frostburg State University. That made a nice path for me to go right into my undergraduate career. On the campus at Frostburg, I serve, I currently serve as the treasurer of our Student Government Association. I am the design editor and news contributor for our campus newspaper, The Bottom Line. I work in two administrative offices on campus, and I'm an honor student. To me, the Allegheny County Opportunity Scholarship allows me to do these things without the albatross around my neck of student debt. I do work on campus to help me with the cost of tuition and fees, but this scholarship allows me to find, to fulfill my potential at Frostburg State University, to find my world of experiences. This lightens my burden as a college student in frankly a time when student debt is a frightening, a frightening epidemic. So I am very appreciative of this scholarship. I think it allows me to get involved on campus, and I think that does have a bit of a trickle-down, really. It allows me to help other students and to get engaged and to encourage other local students to become involved. So I am very appreciative of this scholarship, and I would thank you and encourage you to continue it in the future. Thank you.
And I'd like to say I had the honor of sitting at the table with Nick about two weeks ago. At Frostburg's actually got a program going now where the student body is meeting that night with local government. Then I think you've already had one with state government. The student body at Frostburg wants to become more active within the community, and Nick's one of the leaders in that.
Thank you. We appreciated your presence at the meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nick. And next, I'd like to introduce Abigail Kelly. And Abigail is a graduate of, let me just make sure I get this right, yes, Fort Hill High School. Couldn't get that wrong, right? And she is currently volunteering and doing some work as an EMT or plans to do some work as an EMT, and her career goal is to be a neurologist.
My name is Abigail Kelly. As you've already heard, I graduated from Fort Hill in 2014. I'm currently a sophomore at Frostburg State University, and I just wanted to talk a little bit about my experience so far. In Frostburg, it's been short so far, but you know, you've got like three more years to go. My freshman year, I did not have any financial aid, for whatever reason, and making the decision was already scary enough to go to college, and it was expensive, and I felt like I had to know exactly what I wanted to do because I didn't have the resources to mess up. Through Frostburg, I've discovered the Echo Star Program, which is volunteer group where if you volunteer around the community, you get a scholarship towards the next year. And I started volunteering actually down the street at the YMCA, and by the end of the year, I learned that they liked me so much that they offered me a job there. So I work there now. It's been a very nice year, and I love it, and I'm meeting like the new Echo Stars now. I'm like, this is where I all began. It was great. Through the Echo Star Program, I also got to experience Alternative Spring Break, where I went to New Jersey to help build and destroy houses that were not there anymore from Hurricane Sandy, which was a very moving experience. We helped a lot of people, and hearing their stories was very touching, and I cannot wait to go back this semester. And another thing, I had to get, you know, the scholarship for the Echo Star Program, but I figured, you know, maybe, maybe I just need to get more grades. People need to notice me, notice what I'm doing. So by the end of my first year, I also got a 3.9 GPA. And yeah, so at the time, I was a psych major, and now it's my minor. I still want to be a part of it. Brain's my thing. After loading up on so many of those courses though, my freshman year, I was learning really quickly that it was an easier, cheaper version of what I really wanted to do. And I want to be a doctor. I want to be a neurologist, and that's a lot of schooling, which doesn't bother me. It's a cost. The number one biggest thing keeping me from what I really wanted to do was the price, and I don't think that's okay. Another thing that goes with that is that I knew that I wasn't a strong math student, and math is a key part of chemistry and physics, all of which are needed to prepare for med school. I'm very willing to apply myself and improve my skills, even take a class twice, but again, I felt as though I couldn't because I didn't have the resources. So when it came time to select my classes for this semester, I was surprised to see that I had not one but three scholarships, the most significant being the Allegheny County Opportunity Scholarship. This scholarship has allowed me literally to take my education in one direction, psychology, and turn it around completely into another direction, you know, science, medicine, hard science. It was given, I was given the chance to risk-taking classes that I knew would be difficult for me and not fear the outcome because I could take it again. And to my relief, I'm doing much better than I ever expected I would be because I'm not afraid of taking this course. I'm doing so well. I'm so proud of myself. But without this scholarship, I honestly don't think I would have changed my major, and I would have been not very happy in school with where I was going. This is a key thing because if I hadn't switched my major to bio and health science, I wouldn't have been on the biology email list, and I wouldn't have been informed of my biggest opportunity so far, which are free classes to be a volunteer EMT at the Frostburg Annual Service, which is where I'm going right after this. I'm finally getting to experience what it's like working in the medical field, as well as learn which components in school I'll be using. I'm honored to share my experience with you and be one of the selected representatives of students that have been affected by the scholarship in such a positive way. Thank you.
Thank you.
And finally, I'd like to introduce Lindsay Lineberg. She is a graduate of Allegheny High School. Lindsay transferred to Frostburg from Potomac State. She is a senior and an ethnobotany major. And just a word of note here, Frostburg State University has the only ethnobotany major in the continental U.S. And Lindsay, I believe, is planning to go to graduate school.
Thank you. My name is Lindsay Lineberg, everyone. I am currently a senior at Frostburg State University. I graduated from Allegheny High School in 2012 and then moved on to Potomac State, where I graduated in 2014 with an AA in general studies. I registered at Frostburg in 2014 and declared my major in ethnobody and just recent, ethnobotany, and just recently picked up a minor in cultural anthropology. Thus far, I've been able to use my knowledge I've gained in the classroom by participating in many field trips that include things like going to Dr. Duke's Greenhouse Pharmacy in Beltsville, Maryland, the Dun Sing Farm in Friendsville, Hassel Road Maple Productions in Hyman. And this upcoming winter over intercession, I'm going to the Great Smoky Mountains for research and service project with an eastern band of Cherokee Indians. I've also visited many sites in Maryland pertaining to lab courses that include Rocky Gap, Savage River Forest, Binzel Swamp, Sino Canal, and the Appalachian Trail. Next semester, I will be working with Allegheny County's master growers to create a design for garden plots that will be located in Cumberland that will hold plants that are historic and have medicinal value to that, to the region. I've used the money from the Allegheny County Opportunity Scholarship to enroll in a summer course that has resulted in my earning over 15 certifications that include a Level 1 and 2 Sawyer, Project Learning Tree Instructor, a GIS certification, natural resource management in the wilderness, managing special provisions in the wilderness, and many others. The remainder of my money is mostly used for like my everyday expenses, things like food, gas, some school supplies, but mostly coffee. With the money I'll be awarded next semester, I plan to save as much as I can in order to study abroad in New Zealand during the summer of 2016. After I graduate, I plan on entering the workforce for a little bit and then plan on returning to Frostburg for graduate school. While in the workforce, I plan on pursuing something along the lines of being like a tour guide for a national or state park and telling people about how plants are used and their benefits, basically. Long-term, I would like to work in Allegheny County, just in my desired field. I just want to return home. I would like to take a moment to like express my personal gratitude for this scholarship. It has made such an impact, making things so much easier. Once again, my name is Lindsay. If anyone has any questions, please feel free to approach me after the meeting.
So these are just three of the almost 200 students who are benefiting from these scholarships this year, and I hope that they have given you some insight into just how sound an investment it is when you can relieve some of the financial burden from our students and how the impact that it has in their ability to focus that much more on their studies and their academic pursuits. These students are all, as you see, also very much engaged in campus life, and they are certainly great examples of what we mean at Frostburg when we talk about a world of experiences. So thank you again for the investment that you are making in the youth of Allegheny County, and we look forward to continuing this partnership. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Dr. Bowling, I just want to thank you for being so involved in our community and just being a wonderful interim president. You know, for the past six, three months or so, you know, I've seen you out everywhere, and being involved in the community is so important for Frostburg State, so thank you.
And I'd like, you pass the word along to your students that get these scholarships. You know, the college has, has these people write a thank you letter every time they get this scholarship, and I do sit and I read every one of those letters. I've got an unbelievable folder in my office. And it is great to know that, you know, we feel sooner or later, we're going to see some negative effects from the gambling at Rocky Gap and the whole idea of creating a scholarship. We were going to use those funds to help cure a lot of problems that we've already had. So I think it's a win-win situation for everybody, and we appreciate the way the college has administered this program, and we truly appreciate the students, and we hope you all stay in Allegheny County to pursue your futures. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next item, Larry Schlossnagle. We're going to have a small veterans' remembrance. Veterans Day is next week, and we like to honor those in the county who have served.
It's my distinct privilege to read the names of these Allegheny County employees who have identified theirself as veterans of service in the United States Armed Forces, have served our nation with honor and great personal sacrifice. And if you're in the audience today, please stand when your name's called. And again, these are employees of Allegheny County. Richard E. Beckwith III, Public Works, Engineering, Air Force, six years. Robert D. Beeman, Sheriff Corrections, U.S. Marine Corps, four years. Roger L. Bennett, Emergency Services, U.S. Navy, 24 years. Christopher M. Biggs, Emergency Medical Services, U.S. Navy, seven years. Richard J. Ballot, Public Works, Roads, U.S. Air Force, 24 years. Andrea N. Campbell, Sheriff Corrections, U.S. Army, eight years. Randy D. Cutter, Sheriff Patrol, United States Marine Corps. J. Robert Dick, Jr., Public Safety, U.S. Marine Corps, four years. Harold W. Dixon III, Sheriff Patrol, U.S. Army, National Guard, 21 years. Brylin S. Dolcek, Sheriff of Corrections, U.S. Army, three years. Stephanie L. Frost, Sheriff Corrections, U.S. Army, two years. Melinda K. Hess, Sheriff's Corrections, U.S. Air Force, seven years. Robert M. Hess, Sheriff of Corrections, U.S. Navy, four years. Gerald M. Joy, Gaming, U.S. Air Force, six years. Jeffrey G. Kurgan, Sheriff Corrections, U.S. Army, 15 years. Susan M. Lee, Emergency Services, U.S. Navy, four years. Kenneth W. Martz, Public Works, Roads, U.S. Air Force, four years. George C. McGee, U.S. Army, four years. Eric L. Miller, Public Works, Maintenance, United States Marine Corps, four years. Michael L. Powell, U.S. Navy, six years. Robert J. Pritchard, Senior, Sheriff Corrections, U.S. Navy, 20 years. Larry E. Schlossnagle, Human Resource Risk Management, U.S. National Guard, 35 years. Wade E. Sibley, Sheriff Patrol, United States Marine Corps. Daniel Seimer, U.S. Navy, six years. Melanie Seimer, U.S. Marine Corps, three years. D. Craig Simpson, Sheriff's Patrol, U.S. Air Force. Vernon A. Swanger, Allegheny County Transit, U.S. Army, nine years, and U.S. Army or U.S. Air Force, 13 and a half years. William R. Valentine, Commissioner, U.S. Army, six years. Frederick H. Boss, State's Attorney, U.S. Navy, five years. Ryan Hope Wallman, Sheriff of Corrections, U.S. Army, 17 years. And with those county employees, that gives us a total that I read off of 271 and a half years of military service for those that I just stated. I now invite all veterans who are present and are not, are not employees to please stand and be recognized. Thank you, gentlemen. The observance, but so Veterans Day is an expression of faith and democracy, faith in American values, and faith that those who fight for freedom will defeat those who cause the unjust. I ask that the names of these veterans be spread across the minutes of this meeting to honor and express our sincere gratitude to all veterans for their unwavering commitment to country, justice, and democracy. Thank you.
Okay. Please come forward, Larry. And I think it's good to know too how many people in that list are still serving as law enforcement, public safety, so they've served their country and they continue to serve. This is an official Allegheny County Government Citation, Allegheny County Veterans. Whereas we, the Allegheny County Commissioners, wish to publicly acknowledge the significant contributions to all veterans, men and women in all services, to Allegheny County, the state of Maryland, the United States of America, and the people of the world. And whereas Allegheny County Government is privileged to have employees and retirees who served in military, and whereas Allegheny County Government supports all veterans in word and deed, now therefore, we, the Allegheny County Commissioners, in remembrance of Veterans Day 2015, highly commend all veterans in our community. And witness whereof, we have here unto set our hands and call the Seal of Allegheny County, Maryland to be affixed today, November 5th, 2015, signed by all three county commissioners, William R. Valentine, Creed Brody, and Jacob Shapen. Thank you, Larry. Thank you. We are lucky to have in this area an association, the Greater Cumberland Committee. They're celebrating their 15th anniversary. Brenda, please tell us a little bit about Greater Cumberland.
Absolutely. The Greater Cumberland Committee is a regional business-based organization that services three states and five counties in Maryland, West Virginia, and Pennsylvania. That is Allegheny and Garrett, Bedford and Somerset, and Mineral County. The Greater Cumberland Committee was established in October of 2000, and it was done so by a group of local business leaders, graduates of the Leadership Maryland Program, and visionaries for a way that we could work together as a region as opposed to individual agendas. So for the past 15 years, the Greater Cumberland Committee has worked on long-term economic development projects of regional relevance, working across county and state lines and different parties in order to achieve these goals. Most notably, the U.S. 219-220 project, where they began the completion from Somerset to Myersdale two years ago, and the completion to Maryland state line to I-68, and then on to U.S. 220. And we work closely with our partners in education. Our partners at Frostburg State, Allegheny College of Maryland, Garrett College, and Potomac State College are all corporate council members of the Greater Cumberland Committee. We recognize that education is the cornerstone of economic development and helps to prosper and allow our region to soar. We also look at the next generation of leadership. We look at energy issues and also broadband connectivity. So we are pleased to be here, and we certainly appreciate the support of the Allegheny County Commissioners over the years for our many projects. They're strong supporters of the U.S. 219 project, as well as another event that will be on the agenda later this evening. So I thank you, and we value the partnership that we, that we have with the commissioners.
Okay. Brenda, thank you, and please come forward. Okay, we have an official Allegheny County Citation. The Greater Cumberland Committee 15th anniversary, one region, one vision, one future. Whereas we, the Board of County Commissioners, wish to publicly recognize the memorable occasion of the founding of the Greater Cumberland Committee in 2000, and whereas the Greater Cumberland Committee is a nonprofit business-based organization serving Allegheny and Garrett Counties in Maryland, Bedford and Somerset Counties in Pennsylvania, and Mineral County in West Virginia. And whereas the Greater Cumberland Committee focuses on long-term projects of regional relevance, economic development, transportation, education, energy, and next-generation leadership. And whereas the Greater Cumberland Committee envisions a vibrant region and works for the greater could. Now therefore, we extend our warmest wishes and heartfelt congratulations to everyone associated with the Greater Cumberland Committee, past and present, for milestone achievement, a time to look back and appreciate, a time to look forward and anticipate. And witness whereof, we have hereunto set our hands and call the Seal of Allegheny County, Maryland, to be affixed this 5th day of November in the year 2015, signed by all three county commissioners, William Valentine, Creed Brody, and Jacob Shapen.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Nedved, make it short and sweet.
Oh, I know. I will. Commissioners.
Counselor.
Counselor.
Mr. Nedved, make it short and sweet.
Oh, I know. I will. Commissioners.
Counselor.
Counselor. We have graciously been blessed with a lot of community development block grant money over the years, but one of the requirements of that block grant money is that we occasionally hold progress hearings, hearings on the progress of those various projects. And this is one of those hearings. Notice was given in the Cumberland Times News on Saturday, October 31st, that the Allegheny County Commissioners would sponsor public hearings, and these hearings are to obtain views of the citizens on community development, economic development, and housing needs, to offer citizens the opportunity to propose projects, and to provide input on other needs to be considered, and also to offer citizens the opportunity to review the progress of the following projects. The Savage Pumping Station Generator, the Frostburg Water Treatment Plant Generator, the Housing Buyout in Flood Plains, the Bowling Green Water Project, and the Rawlings Water Project. The background for these various projects was posted on the website and is still available. It's a nine-page document, and I'll start to read it now. No, at this time, if any citizens are here to speak on, to, you know, to comment on these projects, or to offer any thoughts that they had on possible projects for the future, that's what we're looking for. Okay, Commissioners?
No takers?
No takers.
Thank you for not reading.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thanks, David.
Okay, we'll move into our action agenda, Regional Internship Job Bank. Jake?
Thanks. You know, this was just the perfect setup tonight, and I didn't know that Frostburg State was bringing students, but it is the perfect transition that you heard Lindsey talk about. All I want to do is come back to Allegheny County. I want to live here. This is my home. This is where I grew up, and I want to be able to find a job here. So what we've been working on, this started all the way back in February with a visit to the Greater Cumberland Committee Education Work Group out at ACM, and it's been a long process. But along the way, we started this idea of how can we connect businesses with the skills they need, and how can we connect young people with trying to find jobs in their field? And, you know, there wasn't an easy solution, and so we kind of came up with, why don't we try to create an internship bank where employers are listed, students are listed, and you can kind of cross-check each other? And it started just for Allegheny County. You know, this was something that I was kind of pushing, and the county was getting behind, but it's grown, and it's grown through Garrett County and really the whole region. So our goal is to have Frostburg State involved, which they were here tonight, and ACM, Garrett College, and Potomac State, and Greater Cumberland. And Greater Cumberland has just done a great job, and Brenda, you've been wonderful to work with, and really stepped up and got this software, which is what we're voting on tonight to pay for. They actually got a discount on it. And so the software is used mostly by colleges, and I think this is the first time in the country that they're doing a regional setup, that it's not just school-specific, it's for the whole region. And so this is something really innovative and really great for our area, and it's just great to see a partnership between us and the Garrett County Commissioners, and Greater Cumberland, and Frostburg, and ACM. And, you know, this isn't a fix for all of our problems, but it's a step in the right direction. So, thank you.
And this is the type of thing we'd hope to see the scholarship program grow into, the idea of the scholarship is help our young people become educated, help them stay in this area, start their futures in the area, be employed, start their own businesses. This is another step, and we'll see things keep going. Do we have a motion for the maximum expenditure of $2,000 for Regional Internship Job Bank?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Jake.
Brenda, do you have some comments?
Um, yes. To Jake's point, when he came to us back earlier this year and talked about this program, I said to him that the only way that we could be a part of it is if, as long as it was a regional approach. And he agreed with that. And then I think after meeting with our Education Work Group and seeing the passion of the leaders from across the region, who, all they want to do is to keep students local once they graduate, that this was a perfect storm, really. So at this point, we're excited that we were able to negotiate down the price, since we're not a big university, and that it's pretty much a self-sufficient software package once it is set up. Of course, there's a six-to-eight week process that goes with that, but with the Greater Cumberland Committee serving as a, pretty much a career center, and not serving just one college, it helps to open up the doors to other colleges that can, that may want to join in. It allows the students to upload their information, to know that all I hear from my members is that they cannot find people to fill the positions that they have. And they're great paying jobs, so wouldn't it be wonderful to make sure that those two entities are married up together? So I thank Commissioner Shade for bringing that to us and allowing us to be a part of it, because we think it's very exciting.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Okay, Mr. Craig. We've got Declaration of a Very Unique Piece of Surplus Equipment. Creed, you want to go out and hold this piece of equipment up? Can we trust Creed to do that?
No. We'll get Bill out now, will you?
We get to look at this thing, Sheriff?
Sure. Keep your Yosemite Sam inside the sheriff's.
I understand you got this your first year on the job.
Yeah. Rudd was on the assembly line, I think.
Me involved. Commissioners, my understanding is, back during World War II, the Kelly Springfield Tire Company manufactured ammunition for the war effort. That particular firearm, which is a 1921 Thompson submachine gun, was actually used at the guard gate while the ammunition was being manufactured here on location. At some point, it became property of the Allegheny County Sheriff's Office, and it, you know, as long as I've been here for 36 years, I recall seeing it when it first came on. It's been stored in our safe for those years, and it's just a firearm that's, besides its historical value, there's no use in law enforcement really for that. My request to the county commissioners is to allow me to auction the firearm off. The firearm would be auctioned in regards to the ATF guidelines, and prior to a sale, it would have to be approved, my understanding, by the ATF. But it would allow me to sell that firearm and use the money for needed firearms within the department. You know, I hate getting rid of it. You know, it is, it's a wonderful piece. If I could just say Al Capone handled it, we probably could get a lot more money out of it.
Well, you can say that.
But unfortunately, we keep it in a safe. You know, you're afraid to put it out for display. It can't go to a museum, because the individual would have to have a federal firearms license, a Class III license. So it's something, you know, we could never use really in Allegheny County, and it just doesn't fit for law enforcement these days. So I've come before you today asking the ability to place it as surplus property. My intent is, I have a gentleman coming up from North Carolina to talk to me this month, and we're talking about maybe putting it on, which is called Gun Brokers, which is, they have an auction, and where it would fetch to the highest bidder. We would also put a reserve on it, of course, so that it doesn't go lowball. But I think we could actually, the sale of that would allow us to purchase firearms, update it. We have some very old firearms that we're using today, having a lot of misfires on the range, and we'd really like to update that. It would also allow us to do so without using a taxpayer's money for that, because it is very expensive when you go out here and start purchasing firearms for a, especially for a police agency. So that's as much history of, the only thing I do know, I've gone through the records with ATF, that gun was actually, back on January 26th of 1962, then Sheriff Paul Haberline actually registered that firearm, which was the big holdup. If it was not registered, we couldn't even sell it to anybody. It would be absolutely no use to it. Luckily, Sheriff Haberline did, in fact, in 1962, register the firearm, and after speaking to ATF, it is found that it is available, that we can sell it. So all the, you know, hoops have been followed as to determine if, in fact, we are allowed legally to get rid of the weapon. I don't know if he's had any questions about it, or if the...
Well, Sheriff, as you well know, I was very much, when you first suggested this, dead-set against it, because I am very much a historian, a history buff, especially of World War II. Until I get around Dave, and then he makes me look kind of bad. But I know the significance of that weapon and what it means, but in the light of what you're doing with it, like you said, it is antiquated. There's one little caveat in here that I must add publicly before this thing goes to auction, is I do want to fire it. And before I make this motion, Sheriff, is, were you in an agreement?
I think we can probably work that out. I think Bill Valentine actually built that back to 1921.
But I do understand, you know, this is something that you and I have talked about in depth, and it is a great piece of history, and I hope whoever gets it can do something and put it on display where it can be seen, but I have thought of 100 things, we can't do nothing with it even here, sir.
And that firearm, I know, just checking if, you know, it would be a mint 1921 Thompson, you know, in a condition of being mint, they will fetch up to $100,000. So, you know, that is in no way near mint, of course, but it's still in, you know, it's still in good condition. And again, you know, I'm always afraid, actually, we thought years ago to having it displayed in the office, but I was actually even afraid if by chance, you know, our office isn't 24 hours, if somebody would happen to come in and take it, you know, that would be devastating. So we've never, ever thought about displaying it for any purpose like that.
I've noticed there's a few little blemishes in the stock, and I understand that's from Serena smacking you over the head with it a few times. That's why you really want to get rid of it.
It's actually date night, so I brought her out tonight.
That's why you truly want to get rid of it.
As part of this motion to surplus this, part of it is you have to buy her dinner tonight after, no, I'm just kidding. Commissioner, I will actually make the motion that will allow the Sheriff to surplus this weapon, sir.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Mr. Yoder. This has due with Route 36 water, Woodcock Hollow to Route 47 contract.
That's a tough act to follow. Why couldn't I go before that? I'm here about the water project for extending the water from Woodcock Hollow down to Route 47. It's been part of a phase program up there. We bid on October 20th with seven bids. The low bidder was Carl Belt at $731,278. The engineer's estimate was $742,000, so we were pleased with the bid. This project's being funded by grant loan packages, package from USDA and MDE. We're very happy that 600, we have a total of about 800,000. 650,000 of that is grants, so we're very pleased with the ratio on this job. Just here tonight asking for your approval to award of the low bidder.
Gentlemen, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark. And originally, this job started in Slab Town, how many years ago, and has made it that far now?
Four, five.
Yeah, and this has been a significant increase of water ability to this area, so we're almost got this, almost done. One more little piece, so, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Everly, our consent agenda.
Commissioners, tonight we have five items on our consent agenda. Item number eight is a motion to approve a new one-year lease agreement for our office space at Canal Place. The monthly rate is going to be approximately $15 more per month than our previous year's agreement. Item number nine is a motion to accept a burn justice assistance grant in the amount of $55,532 on behalf of the State's Attorney's Office. Commissioners, item number 10 is a motion to abate real estate taxes for property located at 602-604 Maryland Avenue. This property has been acquired by the City of Cumberland, and it is their intent to raise the structure located there. Item 11 is a motion authorizing the board to enter into an agreement with the Laval Rescue Squad to provide expanded EMS services in Laval. Costs associated with this agreement will be covered by the Laval Rescue Squad Organization. The final item, item number 12, is a travel request to authorize staff to attend the GFOA conference in May of 2016.
Gentlemen, I make a motion that we accept all items in the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Dave. Dave, I believe you have a request for proposals for dispatch.
Yes, sir. Commissioners, I believe that we should be in a position sometime very soon to recommend an award to one of the RFP companies that we're working with. And if you don't mind the balance of my time, I'd like to yield to Matthew Biennic, so that he can introduce someone to his left for all of us here this evening. Matthew?
I thought we all knew Brian.
Yeah. To his immediate left.
I'm pleased to introduce Heather Wolford. She will be taking over as the county reporter while I do some other work at Todd's News. And I've only known her for a few days, but I think she's smarter than me, so watch out.
Matthew, that bottle of water there on the table, it's smarter than you, so don't worry about it.
Oh, no.
I can say that now. You're not doing our coverage.
He's not done.
He's still working tomorrow.
I can see the headline in the morning, Valentine's.
Welcome, because Matthews is, you've got a tough act to follow. I will say that seriously, so we welcome you here, and if there's ever any questions you need answered, Commissioner Shade's always happy. Commissioner Valentine? Thank you. Sir?
Are you finished now?
I am.
Okay. Well, now you can start again. Do you have any closing comments?
What about the...
No, we're not going to let the county attorney talk.
Yeah, I'm going to get back on something serious here, something that's very near and dear to me is our public works projects. And something was brought to my attention right when we come down to the wire on this bid for the Woodcock Hollow job. And the reason I'm going to bring this up, because I got to send a big thank you out to our Public Works Department, Paul Cale, and our Utilities Division, Mark Yoder, and Public Works, Jim Weber. About two hours prior to the bid being submitted, a local contractor, a minority contractor in this area contacted me and said, one of the suppliers that supplies a certain piece to us that's not available to anyone else in the country, this supplier refused to give this contractor a price on it. So I found out at Courtal 1 that day, immediately got Mark Yoder, ahold of him, mark it on the phone, Paul scrambled. By 2:00, these prices and equipment was available to this contractor, but at which time he had another pre-bid to attend, so he was unable to bid this county job, at which time I was outraged, because there was no supplier of Allegheny County going to sit and decide who's going to bid and work in Allegheny County and who's not. I've talked to him since in the meantime. The corporate company was supposed to send a representative in here to speak to, to me. They was en route and then decided that we really wasn't worth their time to come in, that they'll just catch us on the surface. So, gentlemen, for the immediate future, Paul has got a way to, Allegheny County will supply this piece, so this will no longer be a problem for contractors to get, but there's going to be a long-term fix here, because what I've seen, and I deal with this, Laval is this company actually painted us into a corner to where we have no option. I mean, this contractor was calling places in Florida, sell the same piece, but because of territory regulations and stuff, they had to go through a company in Martinsburg, no way, no way around it. And then there, because they didn't want to deal with this contract, when they finally did get enough pressure from Paul and Mark to supply a price on it, it was twice as much as what the other contractors was paying for it, which is, at the end of the day, is what we pay for it, because that's a pass-through. what we pay for because that's a pass-through cost. So I am very beside myself on this and I assure you, by the time this gets done, like I say, Paul is going to all over this, I got to thank him very much for this because we're going to figure this out and this is never going to happen to Allegheny County again where someone can, can decide who bids here and who doesn't on something that we require. So, thank you gentlemen, that's what I have. But one more last thing for, and I'll get off here. Thank you Commissioner for your service to the country and thank every veteran out there for their service to the country. Whether I disagree, agree with you all the time or disagree with you or whatever, I have nothing but the utmost respect for what you did to this country, for this country because it gives me the right to sit here and use the right to be there. So, thank you.
Any comments? None tonight.
You don't want to follow that up?
No, Commissioner Brody, thank you for bringing that to our attention because, you know, that's the kind of stuff that's your expertise, that if, if you were telling me, you know, the parts supplier and our, you know, that, that's not my pay grade. So thank you for bringing that to my attention.
Thank you Commissioner.
Okay, for myself, next week's going to be a busy week. I'll be in Annapolis on Monday. Going to try to attend three, hopefully four Veterans Day events on Wednesday and then Thursday and Friday I'll be in Annapolis again. Thanks to being at a Greater Cumberland meeting today. I got to speak with Jeannie Ricchio from the governor's office. She was already aware of the problems that we're having with trying to get information on the four funding that we may be required to do for the school. The governor is not happy with such things. The Mr. Franchot is not happy with such things. So we may get some relief from Annapolis on these matters yet, so that would all be, be a good thing. Mr. Rudd, is there anything you'd like to say?
Nothing.
Thank God, that's too good. Okay, we've got a few constituents signed up to speak tonight. Minister Kenneth Wilmot.
Good evening, I'm Kenneth Wilmot. I live 513 Ford Avenue, Cumberland, Maryland. In reference to our Veterans Day, I'm a 20-year Air Force retiree. Second World War on up to the day. The state of Maryland has enough artifacts and you name it, they got warehouses full of stuff. And for, all you see is they, they're spending billions and billions of dollars down at the other end of the states and all we're getting is the short end of the stick. I think it's time that we demand our share of the taxes. We need, need to bring some, if you put an observation tire upper, that would generate thousands of people a month just to commit, the view upper is gorgeous and if you put up a 1,500-foot tire, you're going to have the most fantastic view in the world, a panoramic 360 degrees. That's, that's my suggestion. And I got one request. Heaven forbid, don't let the city put in a housing development up there for low-income people. We don't need no more of that. Let's put something up there that's going to bring people into our, our community. Now then, on top of these buildings, say about the first three floors, we put in museums. Then the other floors, let's put in luxury apartments. Suck in some of these people from Washington, Bomer, Pittsburgh and around, that's got boot camp money, like we used to say in Vietnam. They put, they put in luxury apartments that, you know, let them rent them out. Bring, let's, let's do something. We, we're not, you know, Bomer Streets are dead. It's a dud. Canal Places, it's a dud. The only good thing we got going is seeing railroad and on Thursday it's a farmer's market. I worked the farmer's market and the place is packed. The other six days a week you can forget. But we need something here that will bring in money. If we're going to spend money, let's spend it on something that's going to bring in people. That old crystal laundry down there, it will never see the day when it turns a profit. All the millions of dollars in the world, you can't resurrect it. Heaven forbid we put in any more beer joints in the city of Cumberland or Allegheny County. We got enough problems as it is with alcohol.
We appreciate your statements, the times given.
Okay, thank you.
But, but you need to go to the city council with these ideas?
I have.
The county has nothing to do with that property.
I have.
We have nothing to do with that development, so you're, you're going to have to keep addressing the city council with this.
Make sure your thoughts are known.
It goes in one ear and where it comes out at, I don't know. Major Grim, he wants to put in a housing development up there.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Don Bor.
I want to talk to you about this book. Allegheny County zoning ordinance. If you county commissioners say something that contradicts this book, it's not in this book, you're wrong. Commonwealth News says something that's in, contradicts that book, they're wrong. If Don Bor says something that's not in that book, contradicts that book, they're wrong. If Bill Rudd says something and contradicts that book, Bill Rudd's wrong. That book is what we go on. I want to talk tonight about this book. I want to talk about this right here. Bill Rudd says the special permit that I received in 1994 for vacation campground is not valid, is not valid. Because I did not follow through...
Mr. Bor, can you, can you help us out and stay near the microphone so we can get all your testimony, please?
Oh, you can't do it? Okay, sorry. Number one, I did not, I did not follow through and besides that, the zoning has changed. Okay, let's look at this. Special permits approved by the Board of Appeals under previous zoning ordinance remain valid regardless of zoning districts which is now located in. Let's look at remains valid regardless. Bill Rudd don't agree with that. You commissioners must not agree with that either because I got no support from you two last week. One other one. It don't say truck stops, it don't say motels, what's it say? Campgrounds. That's what I'm trying to do here in Allegheny County, the Hillcrest River Campground. R2B, just look at R2B, accommodate in what's, in the urban zoning, in the urban zoning district. That's what I'm in. I'm asking you commissioners to accommodate me tonight. And I'm asking for your support. By supporting the Hillcrest River Campground, you're supporting the Allegheny County zoning ordinances, small business and small business. Please do not support Bill Rudd and his efforts to destroy the Hillcrest River Campground. I have a valid permit. I think it's, it's as plain as the nose on your face, what I showed you here tonight. If it's proper, I'd like for you to, a motion here, you guys to support this. Is this proper? Would you do that?
Well, Mr. Bor, this is a zoning issue. Zoning's handled, handled by an independent board. County commissioners do not step into the activities in independent board. What you need to do is go back to the zoning board. Go back to, they'll make the decision.
I'm asking...
This is a zoning issue. We don't get into it.
I'm asking...
We don't get into zoning issues. We're overstepping our authority.
No, I'm not asking you, I'm not asking you to get into it, Bill. I'm just asking you to support this thing, to stand behind it, see that it goes. I'm not asking you to just say you'll support it, that would be something.
If, if you go to the zoning board and they approve it, I'll get behind it 100% for you. But I'm not going to, to just say that we're going to support something to pressure the zoning board.
So you don't support it. You're conservative republic and you don't support it. The fact that what I showed you...
If the zoning board approves...
How about you, Mr. Brody?
Well, this is the first I've even heard of this.
I know, you, you did cut off last, the 22nd.
So, I, I'm afraid I don't know enough about what's going on here to, to say any one way or the other.
What I showed you doesn't mean anything, but the order says...
Don, I, I'm not making a ruling on the zoning, that one way or the other, so...
It's very simple, Mr. Bor. Go back to the zoning. This is a zoning...
You can't go back to the zoning.
Why can't you?
Because they're going to say that, that I, oh campground, like Bill said, you didn't follow through. It's, the zoning's changed. Regardless of what the book says, they're going to, they're going to stick to their guns. They, they're going to not, they're going to turn a blind eye to this.
The zoning board is...
I will not go to the zoning board. So you three guys are not going to support the Hillcrest River Campground, is that right? Election Day's coming, buddy. Thank you.
Okay, our next meeting will be November 19th here in this room. The Allegheny County schedule is available, there will be press releases. We also have an upcoming meeting of the local development council. Those dates and times will be in news releases. We appreciate you all attending.
Thank you.